How about if I just read off who's here? We called to order at six o'clock. Present for the meeting is Lisa Alremi, Todd McLendon, Mark Turzog, Paul Coleman, and Anita Kane. I'm gonna try to keep some like action notes because that's what we were asked to do. So I'm gonna try to do that. So if everybody can kind of help me out with that, I'd appreciate it. Any additions, deletions, or modifications? Or can I have a vote to approve the agenda as it stands?
Proof.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Do we need to vote on it?
I
I don't think
I'm just doing
I thought in a workshop
I'm just
Roberts?
I'm just following the rules, guys. Okay.
They're conducting a meeting.
Agenda approved. Okay. And this is the time where we would like to, I think the way that please correct me if I'm wrong, the way that I understood this was we're gonna open the first portion of the meeting to community input and any concerns that people in the community had. So we aren't doing cards. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Who's in the audience? There anybody who'd like to speak? We've got a microphone right here for you. We thought we wouldn't make you come to the dais. You can sit down. You can, you can do whatever, whatever you're coming.
It's working now.
You have to turn it on. Turn it on.
We have it for you, but you have to turn it on.
Cassie Succi, I had just wanted to bring it up because it's in my thought right now and I'll probably forget it at the next meeting. And I missed the beginning of the last meeting when you were talking about the the red light cameras that they were putting in by the school. And I went back and reviewed and we were, when we were billed that or sold that, we were told it wasn't going to cost us anything. And my understanding is the sheriff is gonna charge us a time and a half fee to read those tags. So I got to thinking, it might be better. It's already a school zone. It's already an enforceable school zone. We just won't have a camera. If we're gonna be spending somebody time and a half to read those for 75 feet or whatever for
Can I just interrupt you for a second? That's not quite exactly what was said.
I missed it.
Yeah. Okay. So here's what was said. The sheriff is concerned that they believe that there's going to be between what Wellington is doing. Wellington put out over $200,000 worth of fines in their first week. So they are, they've got what, three, four school zones, I think, in Wellington? Eight or nine? Okay. So they've obviously got a lot more. They are concerned that they're going to have to train more officers to read these things. What we said we would do was we would, well, first of all, when our town manager and our town attorney went to negotiate the contract, they were kind of thrown this loop that there may actually be an addendum for more charges of the time of of costs of training the officers to read the red speed stuff. So what I believe we spoke about at the last meeting was actually looking into other options. That is not our only option.
I just, like I said, what I was thinking and I didn't get a chance to
And it did not cost us anything to put it in and we do get money back.
So, but I thought, you know, for the length of area, that's the school zone. And it's getting harder and harder to get out of those roads in the morning. Depending on what's the school zone goes, two and a half or three hours? You could use that to enforce along the entire stretch of road and actually benefit the residents of the town because we already have a school zone.
They had speed things today.
And that. So like I said, the speed thing helped, but it was just a thought. It might be more beneficial because there is already a school zone there. Instead of paying that money to benefit that school zone, which is already there, you could benefit the entire road. Take that, if, like I said, you could think about it. Take that money and benefit the whole road. I just know just coming out at those certain hours, it's been getting harder and harder. So I just wanted to bring that up. Just a thought. And I had thought about it at the last meeting.
You can take that mic with you guys.
I, I believe that the whole thing behind the red speed, if I recall correctly, the state statute is squarely located in school zones. So we couldn't take one of those and put it three more roads down to the east? And for, you know, that it can only be done in the school zone.
It's enforceable by state statute.
Yeah, because that, that was the whole concern was with the cameras versus remember the traffic light cams got deemed unconstitutional or something years ago? And so I think that's
So quick question on that because somebody said they got a warning, but they thought they hadn't hit the zone yet. Do we know how far that, that reaches out? Where does it start? Where does it end?
Where the sign starts and where the sign ends.
But they said that, they said that that happened before it. So I don't, I don't know. I mean, that's part of the training of those guys.
I don't know how they could know that because the camera comes on when they cross that point. So I don't know.
I forget who told me today, but they got them. Yeah. So I don't
Okay. And the picture and you've
They're speeding. They're counting before you get to the sign as speeding when it's not in school zone, but for the 30 miles an hour. So it's 40 or 45 before the sign. And they're counting it before you get to the sign as being speeding if you don't do 30 before the sign.
Well, I mean, I'm not gonna get it. I'm certain that if they're wrong and the person goes to court and fights it, that they'll win if they have a picture of themselves outside.
It's about getting clarification for people. Like where does that demarcation?
The demarcation is, it starts at the school zone sign and ends at the other
We were talking about, you were not talking about in the school zone. You were just talking about in general from the 45 zone where it drops into our 30 zone.
Of them before the sign saying they were speeding going over 30.
But they hadn't reached the sign yet.
Use the microphone, use the microphone. So it gets picked up.
Actually, it will pick it up.
The picture that was sent to them was sent with the vehicle before the sign.
It's that microphone.
We can't turn this off.
It happens as soon as she turns hers off.
We just want a clarification that if the speeding is counted at the sign?
My understanding is at the sign, but also keep in mind, it's not just during school zone.
No, that's what I'm saying. Yeah.
It, it's the whole time school is in session, not just when it's 20 miles an hour. So it's a half hour before school starts, half hour after, and that whole window in between.
This was nothing to do with the school zone. It was, they were saying they were speeding because they were going like, I don't know if it was 32.
Yeah, was, do you have the picture?
Right, but it'll, it'll adjust when the school zone stops. It adjusts to the speed. So at 160 Second Terrace, Terrace North, right? That's the name of the road. I know it's, I just call 160. That's where the 30 mile an hour starts.
But I don't think the sign
That's our, that's our town limit. So my point, my point, my point is
The sign is further east than that though. And that's where people don't understand.
Oh, I see what you're
Oh, so we need to repost the sign.
And some today
The county has the
They did move the sign. So I'm not sure if they did or
So the county has the speed limit sign in the long spot.
Required from the intersection.
Is what we're saying. I mean, I, I saw an email from a guy who was, doesn't live in the town and was up in arms and now he's traveling outside. You know, because, you know, he had been sent multiple warnings. And we even said in the meeting, Richard said in the meeting that they're, they're doing it for a long time ahead of time. So everybody get used to it a month. So, you know, I mean, the reality is, is the, like Todd said, it starts what 30 minutes prior? 30 minutes after? So if you are
All day in between.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So
Not just, well, some people just think it's only when it's 20 miles per hour.
Yeah, but the, the message says when the lights are flashing and those lights aren't flashing all day.
But Richard sat, sat in the meeting and explained, I know they're flat, but that's when it's 20 mile an hour or 15.
It's a different speed that you're speeding at.
They're saying the camera said it was only active when it's flashing.
Oh, okay. Yeah. So we just need to get clarification. That's fine. We need clarification. We get Richard to get, you know, we'll issue some more details.
As far as the speed limit sign being at that intersection, I would imagine there's some kind of setback required that it can't be within so many feet of the intersection before that speed sign can be posted.
Yeah, I think the speed sign is like 200 or 300 feet east of 160 Second.
East of that.
Right.
And listen, it's, and it's great that, that it's a school zone and it's enforceable. The 30 miles an hour is enforceable all the way down Okeechobee, right? Now I'm just to another point. It's great that it's enforceable. The problem is there's never anybody there enforcing it. Or else we, there's not somebody there every day, all day enforcing that school zone.
Correct.
Is my point. So this, this, this enforces that school zone every day, all day.
He's arguing about the schools.
I didn't, I'm
We're talking about where does the 30 mile an hour start?
I'm not arguing.
It doesn't start the whole length of Okeechobee except in our town. Do we not, can we get some stripes on the road that say 30 here? I don't know.
Here's where you're missing, I think. The 30 mile an hour speed limit is 300 feet east of 160 Second. So technically, the speed limit doesn't
So it doesn't start at our town limit. It starts 30 miles.
Maybe.
Right.
So is the school zone 300 feet?
I wasn't missing that. I was just saying, you know,
You can't project inside the speed limit.
I was actually talking to Cassie's point, saying that she's saying, oh, well, maybe we could extend it. And, you know, it's an enforceable zone and all this other, yes. Okay.
We probably need to get with the county and put one west of 160 Second, probably.
Because if it's gonna cost us money.
Reduce speed ahead or something like
Well, there is a reduced speed ahead.
I get that.
39?
Some stripes.
I get that, but you know, we can't, if, if it's not being enforced, then it being enforceable doesn't matter, I guess.
Is that how they're getting around the camera laws as far as like?
Because of the statute.
There's a state statute that covers
That gives you that little tiny, that gives you that little tiny bit of
To use the camera.
Yeah, to use the camera. Right.
But it's still, who knows it's 30 miles an hour. Forget about the school zone. Who knows it's 30 until you get to the 30 sign.
Right.
Right. And you're already with
Right, you're already in that part.
Yeah, which most people are gonna do.
So, so, so the discussion is that we'll have Richard clarify where it starts and that the signs are misleading and perhaps some striping, road striping or something might be in order.
Yeah, I got a feeling that we probably need to have a 30 in the acreage right before 160 Second. That's probably what needs to happen. That way when you get to 160 Second. Right, then it's 30. You know, it's 30, right?
Exactly. Yes.
But there's probably a state statute that says you can't have a speed limit sign within so many feet of the intersection. You start running into that, you know? We gotta get with the county and say, make it 30 miles an hour from Seminole Pratt all the way
Three and another 30 miles per hour west of 160 Second.
That's whatever it needs to be unless you can put one right at the intersection, which
Sounds like we probably can't. And would you even see it?
Well, I mean, if you, if there's some way to, to, to set, if there's some way to say that it starts here.
Striping. I wonder, that just do, that's stripping. I mean, we have speed control.
Maybe.
Do you know that, Paul?
I'm gonna hang out until you all let me finish what I'm trying to say.
Go ahead.
I mean, really. What I'm trying to say is I, to Todd's point, or Lisa's point, there might be a certain line that you can't cross, you know, so many feet from the intersection. So there might be a sign that could be had that said 30 miles, because I, I would think that we want to start at 160 Second, right?
Right.
That's where we would want it to start, right? And then maybe that's where it's set up to start. Because that's where the town line is. So I don't know if there's something we can put west of 160 Second that says, you know, speed changing in 500 feet, you know, or something like that. Because I know when you're heading west on 80, when you're heading west on 80, it tells you, you know, prepare to slow, right?
Great idea.
When you're out going on tour Belle Glade, when it goes from 65 down to 50, down to 45 within a mile. So I don't know if there's something that we could, you know, some kind of sign we could put in that says we could do that.
So maybe need another 30 mile per hour west of 160 Second or a prepare to slow down sort of thing.
There, there is a sign already that says
Reduced speed ahead.
But reduced to what? 30?
Well, it says reduce speed ahead and then the 30s pass the intersection. I guess is my point. I don't know if we changed to say
That's what we were saying. Can we get the county to make it that last little stretch to Seminole Pratt 30 also? And just, it lasts until Folsom.
That would be nice.
Period. Road stripes was
Or to Crestwood, really. It should, because there's a school zone there.
There's strips in that flatten their tires. They're going over here.
Add some new technology there.
Forget enforcing the radar. Just say trip the camera up the road spikes. That's it. Okay. Just kidding.
Okay, so it sounds like we want general clarification.
Yeah, that's, I mean, so here's the notes that I have. Talked about red speed. Ask Richard to clarify where it starts. The signs are misleading. Maybe need another 30 mile per hour sign west of 160 Second or a prepare to slow down or road stripes.
And the time when you can be sighted.
Yeah, not just when it's flashing.
Okay.
Well, it was a temporary sign. It said when it was flashing, right?
No, it's a bar up overhead and the yellow lights flash.
Red, red speed.
And it said the speed
Speed enforced when lights are flashing, something to that.
Well, that's not a lie though. There's just, it's not only when flashing.
Well, that's her problem. If you're getting it during that
Well, but is that part of the red speed or is that part of, is that on the, the school zone sign?
Is it a new?
You know what I'm saying? Is that, is that, is that?
Bar, yeah.
Oh, it's part, so it's part of the red speed.
It's not inaccurate. They are, when it's flashing, it's just also
But aren't those on all school zones, I think?
That's, that was my
Yeah, those flashing lights, yeah.
No, but aren't the sign on top of it that says speed enforced while flashing are on all schools?
It's, it's relative to the speed of the school zone.
Nothing to do with the red speed.
Right.
But you're saying it's a new sign.
It's, it's a new bar, new sign.
I think they must have redone them all because the one over in Royal Palm has, I think they all have the same thing now. But so, I'm pretty sure we can't tell them to take down there. That has nothing to do with
You're a wet young man. I did notice
Well pointed out.
I did notice today that as I came up by Red Barn, there was a, a speed checker there. And it said, speed limit 30 miles an hour. And then when I got up to Folsom, there was another speed checker. And then it said, speed 40 miles an hour because you were now in Royal Palm. So they're, they're actively doing something on Okeechobee.
That was this week.
Was it a trailer?
No, it's Speed alerts, right?
Yeah.
Imagine that.
Exceeding, exceeding.
But that may be because, you know, the speed limit is different with the different normal speed limits. So for, for us, our speed limit is 30. So you have to do what? 15? 15 an hour a town? Whereas in Royal Palm, their speed limit is 40 and you can do 20.
Yeah, I forget what Rager said.
Yeah, ours is 15, our school zone.
Because if you're under 35, it can't be the school speed. Even above 35, it would
I think those mobile signs are part of that whole
Maybe.
exposure, you know, road enforcement thing that she was talking about the last meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Then anything else anybody want to say?
We can talk about anything in this, right?
Right.
Okay, so
Make sure you use the microphone. Keep it clean.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
I can speak loud. Well, I'm really confused and please correct me if I'm wrong and redirect me. The RV park, not to be stuck on something, but we had that meeting and then the meeting was canceled. And then there was really no reason why it was canceled or there was no reason given. And then nothing ever happened. So forgive me for being a little, you know, whatever the word is, but it's, it's, in my opinion, still lurking around. I can't see both just going away. So what's the deal with the RV park?
The developer, for whatever reason, decided to cancel it that day and they haven't rescheduled a new one. I think the town provided a couple of dates for them and they
Oh, so it's still a plausibility.
The application is still pending, yeah.
They canceled because two of us couldn't make it at five o'clock because we thought it was gonna be at six o'clock. And so they were given the opportunity to reschedule because we did not want to give them the opportunity to say, well, they caused some undue difficulty because we had to do it at six instead of five. Whereas I, my opinion would be if we said, no, we need to do it four instead of five, that would be the hard part. But anyway, so they have not yet rescheduled.
So how many opportunities do they get to reschedule?
As many times as they want to pay into it.
Yeah, they pay, they pay.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just telling you, as many times they want to apply and, or pay for a meeting, that's how many times they can do it.
This can go on and on and on and on.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and how much do those meetings cost? Because they'll never
I don't have that number. It's, I don't have that number, but it's a cost recovery basis. They, they pay basically ahead most times. Like when you do, if you want to develop a piece of property, you pay ahead as an application fee, kind of like an escrow.
You have a deposit in escrow.
Yeah, deposit escrow that, you know, say it's 20,000, 30,000, whatever you think the, the estimate's gonna be. You put that in escrow and then you work it off through the application process. That pays for planning, reviews, it pays for all kinds of stuff.
The attorney to be here.
Until they literally just say, we're not doing it all.
Oh, I mean, until, I mean, listen, we can say, we could say yes, we could say no. We say, somebody says no, then they can come back and they can reapply. It can happen. So it's, yeah.
I'm just trying to understand. So the council can vote no to this and they can keep coming back to reapply?
They can reapply again the next day.
If they want to keep spending money, absolutely.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
Yeah, no, any, any, any project.
We, and just for clarification, we have no control over who applies for, well, I, I do hear that you do, but since this is publicized, I want to make it clear because I get a lot of calls and not very nice texts sometimes saying, why are you letting them do this? And I want to make it clear that I have nothing to do with who applies for what in this town, nor does any other member of this council. We, we cannot stop anyone from applying for anything, anywhere. They can apply for anything and we have to remain impartial and hear all the evidence before we render a decision or it can be grounds for them getting, getting what they want in the long run. So we cannot tell you what we think about it. We cannot tell you we're gonna vote yes or no. We cannot do any of that stuff because those are all quasi judicial hearings. I mean, can you imagine if a judge went around saying, that sucker's guilty before you went into court? That's grounds for an appeal, right? That's grounds for them to get what they wanted in the first place. So we have to remain impartial, unbiased, and really very much moot, you know, not speaking about these things. And we cannot stop anyone from applying. We just can't. They can apply for anything, you know? Disneyland could come in and say they want to put a park, a theme park over there and we can't stop them.
I'm
My last question on this.
In the microphone, microphone.
Use the mic.
If they come back to apply again, we'll get proper notice and everything so that we can all pitch in on our
That's all regulated.
Okay, that's all. I just, you know, don't want to be surprised by it. So thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it.
I mean, that's, that's a good point toward anything though, right? That's a good point toward anything. There's a lot of, lot of, lot of things get slung out there on the interwebs and at boonies and text messages and whatever. The, the reality is that, you know, no matter what it is, whether it's a, a, some kind of pending contract or it's a pending, you know,
Project.
Yeah, project or it's a, it's a, you know, MUD or somebody wants to put, you know, zero lot lines on that pepper farm on the north side of A road, whatever the case may be. Whoever's sitting in, at the dais up here, it behooves them not to, to remain impartial. I mean, I mean, even if it wasn't a legal problem, I mean, I mean, look at it this way. If you say you're gonna do one thing and then you go do another and it's like, it can cause a lot of problems. Or if you go out and, you know, I'm heck no to everything, no, 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 whatever. And, you know, there's grounds for appeal and things like this. So you, you tend to prolong things and you tend to cause more problems if you're out there stipulating that you're for or against before the vote has even happened. So to, to say that, that individuals are non-responsive to things, you know, cer- certain things, you know, probably we should, you know, I choose not to comment on a lot.
Also been told I'm for things. And I'm like, who, who told you that?
Exactly. So
Because it wasn't
Did they pull their application or is it just?
No, they just haven't rescheduled.
Just haven't rescheduled.
Yeah, I mean, when you start making a stance as to this, I'm gonna vote on things, you're putting the town in jeopardy and legal jeopardy, right?
That's what I was trying to say.
Yeah.
But there'll be public notice by, by law, every time these things come back. There has to be so, there has to be printed publications of this. There has to be signs put up. It's, it's not us. It's a state law.
And then to further clarify, so come around time March to vote for people. And they still haven't, you know, they still have the rights to do this again. How are you supposed to know what the council people stand for if they can't say yes or no?
It's tricky. It's tricky, right? I mean, because if, if somebody that's running for council says, I'm gonna vote no against that, you just opened it up for the developer. When they get a no vote, I'm gonna sue because it was predetermined before you even got on the council or it was predetermined before they saw my application and saw all the evidence being presented. And a judge is gonna make that determination and say, yeah, they, they didn't get a
We had somebody running last time on say, just say no to everything. If that person had been elected
And voted no.
Zero decisions that we made would have been legally enforceable. Zero.
Yeah, I mean, it, it might feel like it's a good political decision, but I, in the long term, it's not a viable
It's putting the town, it's putting the town in jeopardy. You know, it might help somebody politically, but it puts the town in legal jeopardy, which we don't want to do that.
I, I don't know. I mean, that's all conjecture either way, but it, there is no all no, right? Hopefully there's not an all no for everything.
I like to hope so, right?
So then what I hope for is, because there are ways of saying things without saying them. So, you know, when I hear someone say they stand for rural, that to me means not 288 RV parks. So you haven't said it.
You could be general that way for sure.
No, I just hope that, you know, when people run on something and they say it, they stand behind it. That's
100%.
Thank you.
We all hope that.
We all hope that.
From, from this, from this level on up to the high.
Yeah.
We all hope that's what happens, right?
I honestly think the biggest thing that would happen is just all of a sudden dropped. Never, nobody ever heard anything about it again. And it's like Well, neither have we.
And I find it strange too.
People out there, I mean, we come to meetings and it's like, okay. Neither have we. But everybody else, and what I'm taught, what I mean is everybody else that sits and watches and goes, let's go on, but nobody knows anything. But either do we.
Yeah, we have the same questions.
So everybody out there, nobody knows anything. What's the status? Staff says it hasn't been back yet.
The little question mark that pops up, that's, that's, we get that.
I think if that was known more, now we're talking about it. It wasn't talked about. I think if everybody knew about it, there wouldn't be the question. I think that's the problem.
Us five are holding back like, oh, we got a secret.
No.
All right. You're in the dark just like you.
No, there are no secrets.
This, this is the biggest conversation the five of us have had outside of town meeting.
Exactly.
Since March.
So.
May as well hold on to it, Cassie, just in case.
Why don't y'all come sit on the front row? I mean
Nail on the head. I mean, I, I come to all the meetings and I still was clueless. So there has to be a way to
Welcome to our world.
Let us know. You are equally as clueless as we are.
Yeah, we, we get it.
We got bit.
I think I read a column.
To be honest with you, Gina, that's what I tell people and they don't hear it. Everybody seems to think that there's some conspiracy or we have some secret. I guess maybe having the five of us here saying the same thing is making, is getting rid of that conspiracy factor. But honestly, I have said this same thing to a number of people and yet they continue to allude that there's something going on. There is nothing going on.
Not that five of us, not here.
Somewhere out yonder.
Yeah, we're not, but we're not privy to that.
Yeah.
But we're privy to it.
Yeah, but that's what's so nerve rocking is, and I totally agree with you and I trust you and I believe you. But that's what's so nerve rocking for me because
Well, run for office and then you can sit up here and you can have no clue.
You could be called asleep at the wheel and go asleep at what wheel, cause.
I'm not behind the wheel.
Yeah, we're not behind the wheel.
So, yeah, I, I mean, it is frustrating to be on that side, but there's different frustrations that come from this side.
And I, and I've asked, and I've asked that several times, when is that coming back? We're still waiting on that.
I ask every time I have an agenda review, why isn't this on the agenda and when's it coming back?
I mean, maybe, maybe there should be something, you know, in, in, in there where.
I wonder if there is something that says it that. It would just say you have to reapply.
There are time limits on those. Welcome to the world of developers in Florida and the history of how this state has gotten.
Maybe we'll get some positive.
Until the election because they know they don't have a, I mean, they, they, they feel they don't have a friendly council right now and they're hoping to get people elected. That they feel are more friendly towards their cause. I mean, I, we can, we can only speculate about what they think, cause we don't know. Yeah, we, we don't know.
But that's, typically, that's what they, they, not them, but developers and whatever, they. They will bra- you know, they'll just continue and then when they have something in their mind, they're just gonna double down. You know, and if they, they feel that they can make their money back, that's what they're.
Is everybody aware of what's going on in Wellington right now in the preserve? Talk about doubling down.
Carving up the preserve.
Oh, is it the, the, the whole condo thing?
G L homes.
Biggest, biggest developer in South Florida.
Publicly traded.
And they own everything from Corbett to Santa Rosa, past Santa Rosa Grove. So.
Four, four thousand. Yeah, we know. That's what we're talking about.
That's the preserve, yeah.
That's in the preserve, well, was in the preserve.
Well, I mean, listen, that's, I mean, everything that they've developed over the past few years was in, in an ag preserve. You know, and then places like, what was it? Sunshine Met, what is that? They, they complain, it's like the whole, everywhere around you is now a development.
Have to go back to the, the, the award-winning comprehensive plan in the rural tier. That's where they're developing now, is the entire rural.
That's all it's left.
Did anybody hear that Tuttles went bankrupt or is going bankrupt?
Yes, that was, that someone was going around while we were.
Crazy.
But I heard somebody picked up, is picking up the mantle over there.
Yes, it was definitely a squirrel moment. Just like, what?
That's exactly.
Yeah, so.
Anybody from the public have anything else?
I'm still getting late agendas. I, I really wish that we could tighten this up a little bit. Um. I'm on volunteer committees. You guys get paid. I'm sure you wouldn't appreciate getting late agendas. I don't know if you do. But I, I need time. I'm getting old. I need time to read and educate myself on this stuff I'm looking at. No, cause I take it seriously. I don't wanna just walk in and, and listen to somebody talking and telling me what I should think. I wanna be able to look it up.
It was late and how late was it?
I'm trying to remember when it came through.
The first one was Friday. Charter review.
I, I just would like to see things come on time and I'm not sure what the issue is.
What is the time factor for it with it being, being?
All of our agendas we set, well, it's one week in advance. They have to be out a week in advance.
That for the charter review? I wonder, I wonder.
It was a pretty tight.
They're, they're not doing it for any committee though. They're, most, most of the time we're getting our things late. Uh, it's just, uh, it's very frustrating to me wanting to do my job.
ULDC is still getting stuff late, so hopefully. You know, sometimes there's a ton of material, especially like the sign ordinance stuff that came forward. I know there was a ton of information with that.
Had charter, you just had one meeting or two?
Let me toss something out there.
No, yeah, charter's second meeting tomorrow.
Right. So, and I don't think there was a big window between the first and second, right?
Two weeks.
Okay, so they had a week to put the agenda together, I guess.
It's the same agenda, basically.
But I thought.
It just changed the cover letter.
So there wasn't much to go over then? And what was on the agenda? Was there a lot on there or no?
It was, it's, it's important stuff that I, I would like to be able to look over.
So, let me toss something out there. I know one of the things that um. Has been making the agendas late is that there's a lot of, often a lot of backup that comes from a lot of different places. And some people are more timely and some people are less timely um, about getting that backup in. So, it's not just like a one person or a one department issue. It's a, it's a more pervasive thing than that. So, would you rather have, and I'm just, please don't everybody jump down my throat. I'm just throwing something out there. Would you rather have the agenda out? On time, but maybe not complete, you know, maybe not have all the backup, maybe not have all the pages, maybe have a, you know, this page. Intentionally left blank or whatever. Let me please finish my thought. Would you rather have it out? Perhaps, you know, on your time, on your, whatever your limit is, your one week before, exactly. And not be complete, or would you rather have it be complete and be a day or two late, which I'm, I'm just throwing that out there for discussion.
So, this was discussed by council and we said, if it doesn't have the backup, it doesn't go on the agenda. We've, we've tried to streamline this. This, I know it's happened with councils you've sat on, councils I've sat on, you've sat on. And yes, there's gonna be the extenuating search. I think we had, what, three items that we got back up for the last meeting. That we got handed to us two weeks ago, when we sit down. And I have an issue with that because when you go back onto the agenda website, like the, the links. They don't put that information up and I'd like that to be a policy tonight that we establish, that any handouts. I understand. I'm not voting on anything tonight, but I'd like to bring that forward as a policy that. Anything that's distributed to council, the public has the right to see it and it doesn't become part of the public record. Um, and I think online's so uh, cost-effective way to get that information out, that anything we get distributed. But we've also set policy in the past. We were told, I think prior to you getting on Todd, that. Um, the manager said she can't keep people to deadlines. And it's like, well, if you can't keep them to a deadline, how do we keep them to a deadline? So then we don't get information in a timely manner. I think one of the things we were looking at, I even said, how, we just got this tonight and you want us to make a decision on it and this information, it's.
Well, that's not possible.
Yeah, I feel uncomfortable.
But it's not possible. The discussion and saying if it wasn't ready at agenda time, then it just had to be pulled. I do recall.
Right, but the problem with that is like a charter review, if there was three items and only one's on there. We suffer because there's a ti- a time crunch getting that done, right? So it's not like, well, it's something that we just put off a month. It's something that would be put off for a year.
Did you look at their, their agenda?
I, I did.
Yeah, it, it was basically what was in our agenda originally, right? It was kind of a repeat of that information. So it wasn't like they attached. A chart. I think they give you guys a charter. Did they give you a charter copy? And I mean, there's really not a whole lot of documentation to go back through, but. Yes, I mean, that, that one's a unique situation as an ad hoc committee, but.
If it's supposed to be seven days and it was two days, it's not like it was seven and they got it to you in six. Seven to two is a drastic late. It's not like a little late.
Yeah, and I know the finance committee has gotten it like the night before.
Oh, yeah.
So.
So back when I was on the finance committee, that, that, those things happened. That's a lot. And, you know, and that's what would happen is we would get to meetings and I would just say. We are unable to have any kind of a discussion about this because you can't, you can't do that.
Well, and thank goodness, we don't have the thousand-page agendas anymore.
Well, that, that we had a few months ago.
It was almost thirteen hundred.
It was, it was all backup though. If, if we didn't have, just devil's advocate, right? Devil's advocate. If we didn't have to have a copy. And I was told it was done based on transparency, so everybody, like when we do piggyback contracts with the city of Antana. For putting up fence, you know, if, you know, if that's a forty-page contract or a hundred-page contract, that's going in the backup. So that makes the agenda a hundred extra pages. So if we're talking about a piggyback contract. You know, that we don't need to see every shall and be and may and whatever, then. And it just mentions that contract and it's, it points to that contract, then that would shrink the size of the agenda right there. It's like, I, I remember, I know what you're talking about, that one agenda was like thirteen.
Your point, because I just wanna make sure that I have my notes here. Your point was that. When we are given. Backup items, I just wanna make sure I have it clearly. When we're given backup items that you feel they need to be linked to the website or linked in.
Add it into the agenda that's printed on the website.
When you go into the agenda page and it has.
But we're saying we're not gonna let them add-ons.
But they provide backup. It's not.
About the sheriff report at this last meeting for the traffic initiative that they provided. That could be uploaded and there can be a link provided that.
They could just add it to the agenda, the PDF document, right? So if we had an eighty-page agenda and there's an extra twenty pages, it ends up being a hundred-page document.
By link to the published agenda, to the website.
Why not just add it into the original?
Doesn't matter to me.
Well, maybe.
Todd, I think it's okay that, that the original document stayed the way it was and then it shows that these were additional documents. We got the, we got the fireworks.
Addendum section or something and pop all the links in or.
Yeah, like we had the fireworks legislation that was added and then we had a resolution. Remember, we voted on that one resolution that was added at the, like. It was handed to us. It was.
But my thought is if you have one link, it's everything together. Instead of, oh, I missed this three addendums that were here. As long as there's something there, right? We gotta agree on that.
I think it's, I think it's harder for them to pull the old PDF, add the, those pages in.
I agree with you, but if they had just like a blank page built into the agenda at the end of it on the website anyhow. And they just popped all those links onto the black page, that would probably be the easiest thing.
We start altering the agenda by adding stuff in, then people.
I don't think you can do that, but if they have an addendum page, it just drop all the links right onto that addendum page.
Ideally, it's just in the agenda to begin with.
No, I, we agree. I think we all agree on that.
But there were several things that should have been in there at the last meeting and they weren't. You know, the sheriff's thing, we can't control that, right?
Yeah, but things to deal with numbers and spending, yeah. And that's another thing I'd like to talk about is the consent agenda having spending in it. I think anything that's a spending item should not be in the consent agenda.
Even if it's a piggyback contract for chain link fence that we.
We pulled, we pulled off the one to talk about the um, the data, right? We're gonna do the data stuff and there was questions about that. It was a piggyback. It was gonna be expiring. You know, sooner than what our projected timeline was. There was questions about that. So to me, that's a spending one. That should come off.
A lot of times, seeing they're on the consent that are second readings and that, that have money in them that we've already discussed and already voted on.
Right, and I know that.
I mean, why would we pull them? There's something that's already been hashed out.
What if it's just a second reading on something? Could that stay in consent?
But I think we've got this now as public hearings. I think, I think the new structure since uh, the new attorney came on board is those have become public hearings when they're a first or second reading. At least that's what I see in the agendas we've gotten so far. So it seems to be a new structure. So.
Well, I mean, we can pull, we can pull consent items. So if there's something in there that, you know. Yeah, that, I mean, that was a thing for a minute, but you know, from past, you know, so we can, we can pull some consent things. I remember the previous council having a fit. Cause Phyllis wanted to pull something and it was this big old okay corral up here, you know? I was sitting out there going, what in the heck's going on here?
Had become a policy of council that you couldn't pull consent agenda.
Right, exactly. So I think we have made it that you can pull.
It's actually in, it's in the document. It says that consent agenda items can be pulled without a motion.
The difference between, because you guys talk about consent agenda all the time and I know those get pulled, but I've never understood why.
The consent agenda is supposed to be theoretically, the consent agenda is business that has. Already been discussed, already been hashed out and needs to have like a second vote on it, you know, like a, a second reading. Or it's stuff that's just like matter-of-fact course of business that has, that, that, that you know is gonna happen. Something like that. It's just a way to get a whole bunch of business done in one lump that is.
Like it takes that the longest because it gets pulled.
Doesn't require discussion. Well, theoretically, it shouldn't require discussion. Theoretically. In our meetings with staff, we should get our questions answered unless, and if there's something egregious, obviously, and we say, nope. Need to pull that because that needs to be brought into the public eye, then we do that. But if it's something like. Oh, no, that's just about putting a chain link fence over, whatever your example was. Oh, yeah, we talked about that already. We gotta put that chain link fence up. So it's just kind of a way of getting hopefully five or six or seven business items done quickly with one vote. That's all.
Like adding Tracy to the fat committee.
Adding you, adding people to the fat committee. I think that there were like six of those on one of adding different appointees to the committees and things like that.
Like that's what takes the longest and it gets put to the end. So here we're all thinking it's gonna happen in this order and then these all get pulled. And then they get put to the end.
Well, no, that consent is voted on as a lump, right?
Why I was confused. That's all.
So those are not individu- that, that's part of speeding up the voting process.
You could add, you could add eight items and two got pulled. And they get adds to the end because there's people sitting out here waiting. And so it says, let's discuss them now. They get pulled, they get put to the end because there's people out here waiting to do presentations or whatever.
A, a lot of times the way that we try to run the meeting and that I was coached to try to run the meeting is that to have. Basically, the items and that we're paying somebody to be here. To try to go first, okay? So if we can vote yea, nay on consent and get six of them passed, fine. But then to spend an hour on each of the other items discussing them, that's why we're moving them to the end so that we can. Get all the people that are on our payroll out of, that are getting paid, you know, engineers that are getting paid by the hour to be here. Things like that and get them out of, out of the room as quickly as possible.
It would also be more beneficial in the future for like next year, dealing with the budget. You're down to the wire. And you have all these people presenting, budget meetings should be just the budget meeting, not everybody doing these presentations. Cause those meetings lasted the last, it, it, it was crazy.
I think that was the initial want, but.
We were bringing in a new person.
We were head, we were heading into, we were trying to do that, but things.
So many people presenting.
It was, you're talking about when Randy, the engineer was giving his report.
I don't know, two meetings and it had so many presentations.
Randy and Ron Book.
Right, right.
That didn't need to happen.
Well, I don't know if Ron Book did, but I could see Randy. So if we're trying to look at how much we're gonna spend on drainage next year. We get a report from the engineer that says this is how much drainage you need, so that when we get to the budget, we can go. Yeah, we do need to approve this because.
About doing drainage at a workshop. It did, it didn't need to be there. It was nearly an hour and a half that night.
It was long.
Just for those two days.
It's just a thought. Sitting watching.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you sit and watch, um, if you're. Challenge you to watch, but the county commission meeting. I think our meetings are long.
They start in the morning though.
They make a lot more than we do. But you know, so, but if you, they will, uh, item will, they don't really have a consent that I know of. I haven't watched them start to finish. They, they basically will bring something up and it's like item fourteen B dash two five is, I don't know how they keep track of it. And they'll say, is there a presentation needed? And everybody, they kinda look at each other and there's no presentation needed. Okay. All favor. And so it's similar to consent, but it's like, it's like, yeah, we don't need a presentation on this. We've done the homework, whatever, our aides have briefed us. You know, somebody asked me a question, what was it? I'm like, I don't have an aide. What do you mean? I don't have an aide. So yeah, why, why are you meeting with staff? Well, because that's my job that you elected me to do. And you know, somebody's gotta brief me on some things. I'm not all, you know, I think I'm pretty smart, but I'm not, you know. I'm not Sheldon Cooper, so. Anything else?
Yes. Um, I have an issue also with the agenda on our website. Um, it's not up to date a lot of times and there are two calendars. One on the homepage and one on the agenda page and they don't align with each other. So sometimes one has a meeting and one doesn't. Um, they, and I've spoken to people about this a few times and I'm not really getting a great answer on why this is. Not um, gelling together or.
May, may I answer that one? So I, I believe it was Sammy who um, has since um, gone on to other things. That was in charge of the calendar, uh, so I don't know internally um, who's handling that, but that, that is actually two separate. Um, one is through MuniCode, so if you'll notice when you go onto the agenda, that's a MuniCode thing. So which is a separate, so they don't, those two calendars don't interact. Unfortunately, that has to be done separately. So I, I just don't know who's.
Should they have the same stuff on them or not?
They should ideally, and if you'll notice, the one on the homepage has meeting or event. So you have to click on either one of those, cause they're not always, they don't always cross-reference.
I always think our page should be friendly to the residents and, and me being, having to call here to find out what's where. And then they tell me I'm looking at the wrong calendar. I'm like, what's the right calendar?
I, I would agree and that's been pointed out a couple of times and it, since uh, Mr. Brown left, that, that again has fallen off a little bit on. Cause he was keeping it up to date pretty consistently um, for a couple of months there before he left, so.
Not anymore.
Yeah, somebody needs to take the reins on that again.
Of attrition, costing us something.
Yeah, absolutely. So.
Yeah, it's kinda weird that they have two different agendas. Why don't they just have a link to the other agenda if you want something here?
It's to the calendar, not the agenda. So, well, there's Civic Plus. Which is, I believe is who does our website, right? So that's a template that you have to go into and interact with. And then I know that Ansana is what Valerie's using now, right? The Ansana program, which is your workflow stuff. That calendar doesn't feed into those count, so none of it is, is um, cross-referencing or interactive. So each one has to be dealt with. MuniCode has to go in and I think.
Not efficient.
No, and I think the, I think actually the Ansana works closely with the MuniCode. I, I think that's how she explained it to me, but. That's not my pay grade. So um, yeah. It's just somebody has to be diligent because it's two separate processes. And sometimes.
You wanna donate some time, take care of the.
So it, you know, if somebody just, the calendars get up, upgraded or updated on Mondays, right? If that's just a. We have that as a standard. I don't know. I don't know, cause since he left, I.
When Karen calls, yes, they find out.
But perhaps the staff will just have a, a standing Monday by noon calendars are updated weekly and that's the only time they get updated. Cause it's probably time consuming to have to go in, interact with the software and then schedule it to upload. So.
Are we functioning at a, a deficit of um, workers in town hall yet?
I don't understand the question.
Is there open positions? Yes, I think there is.
Yes, there's always open positions. So.
So.
It's like getting.
A lot of our problems is.
Open positions.
Open positions.
Some people say we have too many people here now though, so I don't know.
Right.
Well, I think it's a division of labor, you know, that doesn't always, things, people get pulled away from what they've been assigned and. You know, when somebody's out or somebody's, you know, quit, right? I think I brought my SWOT analysis, cause I still think we need to be going over that. Um, I think that pointed out a lot of that sort of lack of consistent. Um, I think that pointed out a lot of that sort of lack of consistent.
Time sensitive.
Yeah.
I did. Well, um, staff members change quite frequently. And when you walk in, you don't know who you're looking at. I mean, like I met a gentleman at the um, the phone the other day, you know?
He's covering for Angela because she's out of the country. He actually, he, he, it was a temporary thing. What I was told, he, he works for.
Well, it would be nice if he had a tag that we could read, you know, to let us know who they are, you know?
Yeah.
Sitting around and you don't know if they belong here or what?
Well, I'd like to hope if they're behind the counter, they belong. If not, somebody needs to be given the high sign or something. Get me help. But yeah, it, yeah, he's covering for Angela. But that's another example of, of, you know, Todd said, some people saying, claim that there's too many people. But you know, uh, as far as I understand, Angela is a receptionist slash, or she's a permit tech slash receptionist. Meaning she was hired to be a permit tech, but she's also answering the phones and taking care of the counter, et cetera. And there's multiple people that wear like those four and five hats. I mean, our supervisor of public works helps with coding for sure. So, you know, they're all wearing a lot of hats around here. And I think we did. Get somebody to help Valerie. Then they fill that spot, Sammy's spot, Gabby. That's, that's, that's her new designation, right? That's her designation, right? So, and I think they've opted to not fill some others to try and fill others. I don't know. So it's. So.
You got, you got a note for the calendar issue online? That staff will look into it.
I do, I have a note.
It says homepage and agenda page calendars don't sync. Is that enough? That's specific enough? Okay.
So one of the things I wanted to discuss was at some point, we're gonna be in litigation over Okeechobee Boulevard. I have complete confidence, whether it's a year or 10 years or 20 years at some point. Well, I don't know about B road, but um, well, we're already in litigation on B road for that. Yeah. And I brought it up years ago and I think we should change the name of Okeechobee Boulevard back to Middle Road. So when it goes to litigation, it's very clear, this is Middle Road because it goes to the middle of our town. And it would be an easy change.
That a Lord of the Rings change?
That was the name of it in the past.
It was Middle Road, it was Middle Road.
It's putting it back to its original name.
Before it was cut through, it was Middle Road, you know, and the, yeah, and the county took it over and they named it Okeechobee Boulevard.
They put a bridge in.
Right.
Excuse me, can you take notes while I go to the bathroom?
So part of us being a municipality gives us that authority to change that name.
You asked for it.
And I'm just wondering if there's a consensus here to do that.
And, and that's part of, it was the rest of your master plan.
I'm sorry?
The rest of your master plan for. Dealing with Okeechobee.
Part of it, right?
Okay.
You know, we have a lot of things that we've already done. There's stuff in the comp plan that says it has to stay two lane.
Right.
The county's comprehensive plan defers back to our comprehensive plan. Striping the county has told us is traffic control. We have primary traffic control.
Okay.
So there's a lot of things that we've done on Okeechobee Boulevard to protect it. This is just another one of those things.
So you're talking about at the county level, like.
Correct.
Us inter, intergovernmental relations.
Correct.
Got it. Okay.
So yeah, I, you know, if there's a consensus here, I'll say by getting on the next agenda to change it back to Middle Road.
Bring it.
You know?
Yeah.
So.
You gotta wear your Lord of the Rings outfit though when you do it.
Microphone. Microphone.
It's Okeechobee Boulevard.
Yeah, Boulevard.
Is the microphone on? I don't know if it's on.
It goes quiet. It goes to sleep.
You and I have spoken about this, but there's still a lot of people don't understand and I'm quite not understanding it myself. Whereas part of Okeechobee is run by the county, but they cannot. And correct me if I'm wrong with my wording, turn it into four road, four lane road without our, that's still us, correct?
They, they, they can widen the asphalt to a hundred feet wide, but it has to stay two lanes according to our charter, not charter, comprehensive plan. And state law says that we have primary traffic control. The county has already acknowledged that traffic control includes striping.
Okay.
So they could put it as wide as I ninety-five and we say, guess what? It stays striped at two lanes.
Okay. So what is their part with the Okeechobee Boulevard?
What is their part? They want it six lanes through.
No, no, but what, why, there's like um, a marriage here. What is their part in this role?
We don't own that road.
Okay, this is what I'm trying to.
It's their road.
Eighty foot or something.
They own it.
They own the road, but we control it.
We have traffic control.
We have traffic control.
Specifically traffic control.
And, and we put in our comprehensive plan.
Did the speed limit. They're not happy with us about the speed limit, but we did the speed limit.
Okay, so unless we want that changed, it cannot be changed.
Unless we lose something in court or something, right? So I'm sure at some point it'll be in court.
So you've driven through Haverhill and you've driven through some of these other places that historically had a two lane road and they fight it. They do speed control. They try to limit the, the width of the, and the amount of lanes. And that, that becomes a local battle against a larger government entity. And, and they, and they have other pressures, right? So we're looking at the pressures of, we just talked about it. I think before you got here, the comprehensive plan and the, the rural tier that used to exist, that's now the urban tier. Um, which they're just pumping in houses and stuff to our west, which is, they're looking at ways to relieve that traffic flow. And um, that's part of the pressure that has consistently, as Marge can say in her long tenure here, has, has been an ongoing issue. So.
And when I was in Orlando um, last weekend, that was one of the things that I kept fighting for in the uh, in the um.
Legislative.
Yeah, in the legislative area that I was representing, which was uh code and uh development. And uh, you know, I kept saying that we're getting run over, you know, our rural town is being gobbled up or trying to be gobbled up with all the rules that Tallahassee is throwing at us.
So why, okay, so I really forgive my ignorance. Do they all?
Stop saying that. Please just ask your question. You'll have to say into the microphone.
Why do they own the road? How, cause it's part of the state?
County road.
They own, they own.
It's a Palm Beach County road.
What? Oh, okay.
It has a right of way.
It's been a Palm Beach County road.
County road.
Basically, all these roads are Palm Beach County road.
No, no.
That's, that and Folsom is the only one.
That and Folsom are the only ones in our town. The rest of them are our roads. Okeechobee Boulevard and Folsom are county roads.
So how did that happen?
It happened a long time ago. Long, decades ago.
Okay.
It used to be Middle Road and it didn't go through. The county said.
Orange Grove.
It was two dirt tracks.
And at some point the county said, we want this road to continue out to Seminole Pratt. They bought the land, they put a bridge in, they paved it. And it's a county road, way long before incorporation.
Do you have a picture of Ellie, of Ellie Hope and them sitting there?
Well, help.
Front and loader or whatever blocks.
Almost like a psychological thing. So when we go to court, we don't have to explain to a judge, this goes through the middle of our town.
Okay.
This isn't Okeechobee Boulevard like it is in downtown West Palm.
So how, I guess, what do you do to change it?
We just change it. We, 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 yeah, we can vote on it. It changes. Google Maps would change. I don't know if you saw how fast the Trump Boulevard or whatever on Southern Boulevard. It was like that.
And I don't know if you've heard me speak at like some of the town halls and everything that uh commissioner has. Um, but, but that's one of the things that I keep bringing up. This is our main street. And you know, I've had private conversations with her because I've been fighting her desires for Okeechobee, which are a little different than ours. And I've been having a lot of, you know, trying to lobby her that like this is not okay and this is why. Um, and uh, you know, she keeps saying, well, it doesn't happen, you know, just think about what you're asking. We need this. It doesn't happen anywhere else. And I'm like, well, uh, you know, I beg to differ with you. Let's talk about Royal Palm Beach Boulevard between Southern and Okeechobee. That's remained two lanes with its nice little stop signs and its thirty mile per hour speed limit. That is the same as our middle road. And Todd's right. If we can get that psychological factor in there and then keep finding other instances like that section of Royal Palm Beach Boulevard that have remained that way. Because you know, as you all know, all of us who have to go out on that lettered road, from those lettered roads, particularly from the north. I mean, from the south, at least it may be a little bit less convenient, but you can go down to southern and hopefully there's a light. But from the north end, it's virtually impossible at this time. You add another five thousand trips to that road, forget it. We're landlocked in the north.
Because I did, I went to that meeting with uh.
Right. And, and I have had that conversation ongoingly with.
Well, it was really, it was kind of disgusting with Arden Court and Westlake demanding.
Yes.
This, why do you get to?
Well, the last one wasn't any better out of Palm Beach State College. That same guy was there.
And the Arden Court guy said, well, we only have one way in and out. You bought there dude. That's not my.
Well, that was funny because that's what he said. Well, you people had to know what he.
I said that to him, how angry he got.
The one, the one guy, I own a press, a property in California and it had a road that was named there. And at any given time, they could have came and busted the road right through. And I knew when I bought it, okay?
So Jane, Jane, we have documents in our town, like our charter and our comprehensive plan. And our comprehensive plan is the only one that usurps the county, right? So it's about us controlling language in our documents to make sure that we protect ourselves. And that's, that's what the council member McLendon's suggestion is, is that we use language. Mary Kane put it in there too. It, it's about us establishing um a mindset and, and our, our protective nature about the middle of our space here.
Yeah, I mean, fortunately it was called Middle Road. If it was called Collecting Canal, it wouldn't have as much impact, right? But it was Middle Road, which makes it clear, you know, it's, it's even a better impact.
So how soon can you vote on that?
At the next council meeting.
Alright.
You know?
Well, if we're gonna do some comprehensive plan changes, because that goes in the comp plan. Okay. Cause I know we talked about um, when the comp plan review was going on. The um, the boundary language was something I think they did by resolution, but it didn't end up in the comprehensive plan. So that needs to go into the comprehensive plan. And um, and I think uh, Marge, that we talked a little bit about, you know, tangerine being the boundary for the commercial and um, that special.
I don't know how that got moved out of there. I mean.
That's, I don't know where that existed prior.
I mean, now they're saying it can go to collecting.
No, no.
No, there's.
That's what the Southern Boulevard corridor that magically appeared in.
That is not what that says either, but that's okay.
Yes, it does.
Study the area.
Studying to collecting canal from Southern Boulevard.
But studying it for what? Agriculture? Doesn't say. It is misleading. I'll give you that on the website. It's definitely misleading and I, yeah, it is.
It's intentionally misleading.
Well, I hope not.
Cause that's the direction it's going.
I don't know how uh, tangerine as the uh, the northernmost.
It hasn't changed. It's still there.
It's still in the.
It's still in the comp plan. But the issue, the issue lies in, the issue lies in that over the past so many years, namely two large developments have been granted that go from collecting canal.
Correct.
To Southern Boulevard.
Two. One.
Two.
What's the second one?
State college and Publix.
The college.
The state college and Publix.
Publix does not go north of Tangerine.
Sure it does.
Yes, it does.
It's even with it.
It sits north of Tangerine. Publix actually sits on the north side of Tangerine. And then the, the solar. No, it's called avocado, but it's tangerine. I don't know where the name avocado came from.
So that, that northern one is not tanger- it is tangerine, that northern one.
That road right behind all these is tangerine.
Tangerine.
Yeah.
To all these is tangerine.
Yeah, that's tangerine. They call it avocado, but it's tangerine.
Okay, so the, but the one in so, solar sport, the, the one on the north side is the one they, they call tangerine. Or is it, is that the one avocado?
The one right behind, the one right behind Wawa is called avocado and that's tangerine.
Came in and asked for tangerine to be rerouted so that they could put in the development that they want.
Exactly, because.
That's how it happened.
But the, the whole development goes to collecting canal. The whole M U D.
County assisted living was north of that.
But that's, that's all since been changed. And we had no control over the state.
We didn't have to approve the state college.
Correct. But once they're there.
Once they're there, yeah, you're done.
They could put a fifty story.
Yeah, well, that's hence the new building, which is beautiful, you know, is, is above our height restrictions because they can do that.
Right.
So the, but the thing is, is regardless of whether they, you know, move the assisted living or not, that whole project, that whole M U D goes to collecting canal.
Correct.
So thereby, the, the, and, and I said this multiple times, precedent, 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 nobody listened. And now we have precedent of two, right? That go to collect canal. So that's, you know.
That's what's opening up for litigation.
Right.
But we also have a giant conservation buffer along there too.
I, I dig that, but it's still commercial to collecting. I, I, you're, you're preaching to the choir. It's still, it's still commercial and it's, it's, you know, so that's the, that's the big thing is trying to, is trying to um, demarcate or solidify somehow, some way that, that this tangerine to southern is a commercial.
Correct.
And if you're beyond that, and I don't think, I don't think our, our language solidifies it. It mentions it. It does. It talks about it.
We really get to work on.
But that's the, but that's the commercial quarter.
What the corridor is about.
That's what the, that's what, that's, it's the start.
Point is to do a study and to make those demarcations in an official overlay. That is the point of it.
That's the point is not to try and expand it. Because the only things happened so far are workshops and visionings and all that other stuff. So it, it, the idea is that we have the visionings and whatever, and unless we approve it, it doesn't get done anyway.
Well, then.
Has to get done.
I think we should instruct staff then to change the language so that's clarified for the public.
Saying website, you need a paragraph in the website. It is not good way to learn.
Well, then.
Tell them.
Yeah, we can get it, we can edit it. Let's, let's review it. Because that's the intent. At least that's the way it was told to me. Intent is to solidify between tangerine and southern, which I guess on this end of things, it would be citrus.
Coming. I mean, we know that for a fact.
Yeah, I think there's what, three or four parcels left.
I mean, you got, you got, you know, Brown Holding or whatever that has the trailer parking. They bought uh, Morello's property. So they own.
Means nothing to me.
Sea Road and Southern.
The Shell gas.
Right. Sea Road, yeah, from Shell, from Shell gas station to Sea Road and from Tangerine to Southern. And actually, it, 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 it kind of travels, that property travels over.
It does travel over.
Tangerine a little bit. So, you know.
Because there's no real road there.
The. There, there used to be, then, then the owner, the one property owner had gated it off. Cause I mean, I used to ride my bike through there, four wheelers and all kinds of stuff, horses, whatever. You know, but then they started, you know, trying to do stuff when they, actually that forty-seven acres that's proposed for both. Used to, they split that into like three fifteens or whatever and put retention ponds in the front because they were gonna develop those.
Is that why the ponds in there?
That's why those retention ponds are in the front is because some, the guy who owned it before this guy. He tried, yeah, he tried to develop it and he tried to break it up into three fifteens and, you know, but that's, you know.
Always interesting history.
Yes, absolutely. So.
So another thing, when uh Francine's contract came forward, the rules and procedures for our council meetings were included in that. And reading through that, I don't know if you guys remember when the council removed Phyllis from the dais at a meeting. And I was appalled that they did that. And I was like, how did they do that? Well, in the rules and procedure, that's allowed. It says you can do that. I think that should be removed. I think if a council member has been elected to be put here, they should be on the dais anytime that they're available to be there. And for three council members to say, no, you can leave at will at any time for the entire meeting and for every meeting that they're here on their three year term is wrong. And I think we need to pull that from.
Yeah. And, and the wording says that they're, for the rest of the meeting.
Right.
Right. Not just for the item.
Right. So you could have a row, three, three council members that just say, every meeting dismissed, dismissed, dismissed every meeting. We need to change that rules and procedures.
That, yeah, I actually have those on my list as well.
We want to do change.
I think we just need to review them and uh make changes as necessary.
On the fat committee before. Of my life on that. I gotta do it again.
Well, and you're.
How did you leave that part?
Your, your point though, to the contract, um, there's.
Change rules and procedures.
There's.
Discussion.
There's language in there regarding um, council members, it's under definitions. Council members, um, they, they can't govern individually, but they don't lose their right as an individual to obtain information in the role of governing. Um, so that's not anywhere in our. Um, so that's not anywhere in our policies. And I think we made the rule about two hours for, uh, record search. And I think there's a conflict there potentially. So, uh, as we go through that policy and stuff, I think, you know, we just have to make sure.
Can you explain that? I've got the deus one. I was writing that down when you were talking.
Yeah, yeah, um, the.
Give it to me.
Yeah, the time constraint for individual council members may be in opposition to what's in the contract for the manager.
In the manager's contract?
A time constraint.
It's, it's in the manager's contract.
What time constraint?
We put two hours for council members to get public records request.
Fifty dollar.
I was, I'm sorry, I still stuck on hours. You're right, fifty dollars.
Okay, the dollar constraint for public records.
Is conflicting with the manager's.
With, with, uh, definitions in the manager's contract. Um, so I just want to make sure that we don't have too many conflicting policy things, um, so.
Definitions in policies and procedures.
No, no.
It's in the contract.
It's, it's stated in the contract.
In Francine's contract.
Okay.
Now, I can tell you generally when you have two items within something that are two documented that conflict each other, generally the most stringent wins. Right? So you can have something that says that I can, I can build this house to.
Is this your legal opinion, Todd? I mean. Sorry.
Who are you offending more?
Okay, well, allow, allow me to practice.
Seems pretty offensive.
It's that testosterone thing.
It was assumed that we, none of us were lawyers sitting at the table. I'm not a lawyer. Uh, but I have to, I have a feeling that a lawyer would probably back up what I'm saying, but I could be wrong. Because I deal with conflicting regulations on a regular basis. And generally, when you have a conflicting regulation, even within the same code, that the more stringent wins out.
Well, I would say yes, except if it's a charter thing, like the charter, I think would be the overarching. So there, there's a hierarchy of some documentation and that, that.
Correct.
Right, and that, that goes beyond who's more stringent, right, maybe.
But, you know, but the state, but this, this, but this is the deal. The Florida Building Code is the Florida Building Code, right? Um, and say, we want to do an amendment, right? We want to do Locks at your Grove amendments, which like Palm Beach County.
We can make it more stringent, but not less.
Exactly. We can make it more stringent.
Can't now with one eighty.
Well, not.
That's true.
Let's get on that. Let's, let's go down that rabbit hole.
It's not just us.
We're saving that to the next workshop. I wasn't even going to say the numbers.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, so you can make it more stringent, right?
Yeah.
So that's, you know, so, you know, the contract says we have the ability to individually request information, right? For the sake of governing, right, in essence.
Do you want me to read it?
No, you don't. I'm, I'm just, that's what you were saying. It says that we have that ability. We can't govern individually.
Correct.
But we have the ability, we have the ability to gather information individually.
Correct.
To govern, right? So later on in our policies and procedures, whatever, it says that we're regulated down to two hour minimum to pull.
Fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars.
Sorry.
And, you know.
It started back.
But, you know, it, it regulates how, you know, it regulates that. So over here, it doesn't say you're, you're individually able to acquire as much information as you need or as you think you need, or whatever the case may be. That's my point. So I understand there's a conflict, but I'm just saying at this point in time.
So to that end, uh, uh, obviously sunshine law and, and you've expressed some frustration with us. Uh, it, it really limits our ability to, to interact freely and sometimes, you know, one of us is bringing information forward at a meeting that, that because of sunshine laws, we couldn't do before. It is possible, on my research, not a lawyer, um, that, that, um, information can be shared as long as we're not commenting on it. So I would like us to look into a potential policy. Say Marge comes across some information she thinks is important to share.
He could send it to the clerk.
I understand.
The clerk distribute it.
I understand, but I think, I think as a council member, we should be able to share it, copy it to the clerk. Um, because sometimes it's going to be information that may not be so flattering, right, to certain staff or anything else and it, I, I don't want to say that it's, it's a gotcha, but I think it's important that that documentation be shared and it not be filtered in any way. And I think if we share it as council members and copy the clerk, then it doesn't put the clerk in a difficult position that she's making a call.
So your thing, we share it with the, with the other four and copy the clerk.
Correct.
We send the email.
And nobody replied.
Nobody replies.
I did it one time. There's no reply at all.
There's no reply.
I wasn't. Saying it.
No reply.
I didn't even remember that. Just making the comment. No reply.
Got excited. It was like my second email.
So I, I'd like us to explore that. That is a.
I think we need to get Jeff to.
Okay.
Bless that one.
That's the attorney.
It's good. About sharing.
Info sharing.
I know how he is and I know what his answer is going to be.
He's going to say no.
Right. I've had conversations with him, very similar to this, and I'm like, Jeff, if there, if there's no response, what is the issue? It's no different than me getting interviewed by Channel Five. And Anita hears it on Channel Five than if I say it to her directly.
But I'm.
Long as she doesn't respond.
I, I feel strongly as an.
That's his.
I feel strongly.
He's the town attorney, right?
I feel strongly as an elected official that we are put at a disadvantage.
Oh. Sure.
Right? And we get played and we get different information. And I know that the agenda review had been a, a way of dealing with that in the past, but that means somebody has to give up more time to go sit in an agenda review and we're all present and, oh, you can't vote. And we saw that was happening in the past and we don't want to go there.
Yeah, I think that's.
So.
We could put Jeff on the spot and say, instead of your opinion show is case law that says we can.
Yes.
Exactly.
And, and we could say, sorry, we're going with our own opinion on this and this is what we're going to do.
Well, that's all a lawyer could do anyway. He doesn't stop the policy.
I get that, but my point is if he can show his case law or Attorney General opinion, that's, you know, that.
Counter to that, yeah.
Right?
Right.
We could go by it. Otherwise, we could say, sorry, Jeff, we're overriding you on this one. So that's a possibility. So I guess ask Jeff if there's any case law or anything that backs up his position that we can't have one way communication.
Their case.
Yeah.
Yeah, for one way communication.
So was there anything else that you had? Because I have a couple of things.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I know that we, we all saw that, um, committees started meeting again after a long hiatus, shall we say, from previous councils. Um, and I think that, uh, Paul, you talked about wanting to get into a deeper dive into the budget. And so I'd like to see us tasking committees with, with certain things that we like brought back to us.
Yeah, I mean, as far as I understand it, and what I was told when I was on ULDC prior to council, when I tried to bring something up, it was you're tasked by council.
Yes.
You know, I, I couldn't, I couldn't drive Jeff to go a certain direction and get this pulled in. Forget exactly what it was, but let's start working on this now that we've done this, right? And he goes, no, that's a, that's a, you have to be told by, I said, well, then who do I need to get to say it, Jeff? Because I mean, tell me where I got to go, who I got to talk to, and I'll get the direction. But he was emphatic that it's council driven.
So for example, um, council voted to a five percent reduction. So could we get like finance committee to review the five percent reduction that's being proposed by staff? Right? And, or finance also comes up with their suggestions and that, that we get that information to consider. That's just an example. Um, I know that we've talked about the electronic fund transfers that have been going on all predating us with no oversight. Um, and they've been going on from the research I have for four years with like almost eighty vendors receiving electronic fund transfers.
Just buy, was it a hundred?
Correct, correct. Um, so things like that. Um, I know credit card statements don't get reviewed. Um, and while a lot of that may be in the budget, I think the transparency there is, is important. So maybe we come up with a list of, of things we want to task committee with and then we decide.
How do you know that they don't get reviewed, the, the credit card?
We don't.
Oh, we don't.
We don't.
So somebody from state.
So if we sign off on a credit, a, a check.
I haven't, I haven't signed any checks.
Because everything's E F T. The majority of stuff is getting.
Sign a lot of checks, but I always, I always look at the backup and I always look at all the details.
Do you get credit cards?
Credit cards, there's, there's a statement with.
They do not pay the, the credit cards.
Is E F T.
Okay.
I thought I've just meant any checks I do sign.
Right.
Like, I'll give you an example. I just signed one tonight that I was very unhappy about signing because the backup was somebody's handwritten notes. And that person was very upset and complained to council about a certain council member about not getting paid in a timely fashion and didn't understand why they weren't paid. In my opinion, the person should not have been paid at all.
There was no receipt.
Another council, there were no receipts.
I didn't ask for that person to be paid. I said for clarification.
It was a handwritten note.
Yeah.
You know, I spent fifty two cents on this. I spent five dollars on that. So there was this big, a big thing where I was actually called over from work to sign this check, to get this check signed and out because everybody was worried about this person getting cert getting paid. I'm all about paying cert, but I'm also all about having backup. And so I did sign the check because I wanted to back up my fellow, what I believed was backing up my fellow council member and get this taken care of, something they had made a promise to a citizen that would.
I, hold on, I never, hold on, I never made that promise. I said, could you please clarify why this has not been paid? If I had been told there was no backup, I would have gone back to the gentleman and said, I'm sorry, they're waiting for backup.
There is no backup.
Well, that's a.
The check, the first check was made out to the person.
Yeah.
No, 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 they didn't. No, they didn't.
They had you believing that I was demanding he be paid?
No.
Okay.
And you didn't have all the information.
All, all I said was. Why? He's not getting paid.
I just.
That's a different problem.
When I was presenting.
That is not what was said.
It was made out to the.
Person as opposed to the organization.
Right.
Which.
And then we were pulled back in to sign this second check, which made out to the organization.
We got it done. So my point being, I looked very carefully at the backup when I sign checks. And that is one that, under normal circumstances, I would have never signed.
Now, I wouldn't have agreed to sign it either.
Said to me that you did this or did that or did the other. What they said was that this person went to you because it had been a long time and the check was not done.
Well, what was told.
They said, it, I said, why wasn't it signed? Why wasn't it cut? And they said, because backup wasn't provided and this was all that was provided. And I said, well, I wouldn't have cut the check either. Did somebody communicate that that's what was lacking and needed to the person? And they said, yes. And I said, okay, let's just do it, but play make it very, this one time. But make it very clear that in the future, there will be no, because cert is something that is in our, we actually have a line item in the budget. We support cert, um, but make it very clear that in the future, if there isn't proper record keeping on that part, that we will not cut them anymore checks.
I can tell you, that was never shared with me, which is why I asked for clarification from staff. I didn't demand that a check be written, a cut, I, nothing. I said, this is what I've been informed. Please let me know why this is happening.
Well, I got.
Now you know.
Sorry, now you know the whole.
Can I ask a question?
To force the check to be.
It, it, it goes along the lines of what I think was the last meeting I was saying. Is there a clear cut procedure as to, that, that dictates what's needed for us to cut a check?
Yeah, it has to be backup. It has to be approved by two different departments. It has to be approved by the, the.
Right.
Yes, there's a whole procedure.
So there's a whole procedure.
Give you the rope procedure.
I don't need, I, yeah, I don't need the, my question is, but you say, it says it has to have backup. Does it define the backup?
Well, the backup isn't somebody's handwritten notes.
I'm with you. Listen, I'm, I'm, I'm not fighting you. I'm not fighting you. I'm, my point is, is I think.
Have a P O or a backup.
A P O or a backup, meaning some kind of receipt or whatever. So that, that is, well, because it seems sometimes, not this instance, but it seems like sometimes, you know, I was trying to explain this to somebody the other day. I go in and I ask for the X, right? Right? I'm Joe Schmo. I go in and ask for X. I, I need to do X. What do I need to do? Oh, you do this, this and this and that.
Right.
Right?
Get different directions from different people.
Karen comes in and goes, I want to do X, which is the same X that I'm asking for. And she's told three different other things that, that's needed.
Right. And that has people feeling like other people are getting preferential because they only had to do X and Y and I had to do X, Y and Z. Correct.
I think the majority of people would agree handwritten note is not good enough backup.
I agree. I agree as well. Or is that even like, even like. We're very sorry, you know, it's, 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 it's us five people, whatever. We lost some receipts. Can we do this one time, please, whatever? It's just like, here, here's your handwritten ledger. And I, I get it. It's not even like they're scanned and like, you know, something.
So, um, one of the other concerns, um, that was been discussed is we went to the employee model six years ago.
Wait, excuse me, we just went through that whole long thing. Was there something I was supposed to write down from that, from that discussion or no?
No, we were just talking about E F Ts. And, and that sort of thing.
You already talked about that.
That, that was.
We already talked about the last meeting.
Tasking committees, tasking committees.
Okay, tasking committees. That was the thing.
That was the thing.
I, I, I just don't know how much I agree with tasking the committees with that stuff, but I guess we can certainly discuss it.
No, I think her point is right now, they only work on what's tasked, right?
Yes, who's tasking?
And we should be prioritizing what we want.
The tasking should go along with our, part of my list was.
And I'm, I, I don't necessarily agree with tasking committees with all the things we just have talked about here.
You know, not.
But this we're doing right now, so I'm certainly willing.
So what I'm, what I'm, what I'm saying is, and I don't mean to jump ship, but it, you know, I, one of my things was, and it's been brought up multiple times since we got here, right? And, and since we started asking for this meeting and we finally get to have this meeting, you know, the priority list, right?
Mm hmm.
And I think.
Give me one second. What was your, what was your example of what you want to task committees with? I'm so sorry, but I just got to get this.
The five percent reduction that we want.
Assist, assist staff with coming up with.
Okay, all right. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but no, it's, it's, it's cool. It, it, you know, that whole priority list. I think if, if we can nail down the priority list and, and you know, even if we just say this is a great priority list, but we want to put these ten things at the top and, and just rock on those, that's going to direct.
And I think.
Those committees.
I want to ask to have that hundred and twenty item priority list on our next agenda or however many other, over a hundred.
Why don't we just ask for, for next workshop?
Let's, yeah, let's do, that's what I was going to say was can we get it for the next workshop and like really focus?
Yeah.
I think this and I, because I think we're just getting our feet wet here today. We've got about thirty minutes left. I think this right here, the, the SWAT and the priority list need to be our focus.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that?
Do you agree?
Can I, can I put a little kink in that though, um, with the priority list? Because we have to have a strategic plan in place, um, per the town manager's contract by March. Is it the twenty ninth? Um.
Well, this talks about some strategic planning.
Yes, and that ties in with the priorities and that, yes.
And then, and I think that'll give staff one more time to implement some stuff that's mentioned in here that they're already starting to re-implement. So.
So back.
You derail yourself.
Back to the.
Priority list for next workshop plus the SWAT analysis. So those are our two key items.
Two key items.
So back to the employee thing, and this goes to the charter review committee. As, as we have dipped our toe in this. Charter control and the council control and who can we reach out and touch? And who reports directly to us and the finger pointing that was going on and the concern about how that finger pointing was, was derailing things, to use your term. I would like to look into a task the charter committee with possibly putting on the town clerk as a charter officer. And potentially the finance director, but I'm concerned about that because if the charter says you have to have it, do you have to have it? And are we, are we locking ourselves into having another position? So, yeah, yeah. So. Yeah, yeah.
Don't even go there.
Well, a budget officer or somebody that has to report directly to council, right? I think this year our budget.
Charters have the clerks in them as.
As a charter officer, because I think they're a state.
We were looking over and at, at a workshop that Todd and I did, we were looking over a lot of other towns. Um, you know, they give us some examples of a lot of other towns and just about every one of them had the town manager, the town attorney and the town clerk as charter officers. And I, I went back and looked through ours and the clerk is mentioned, but I don't think they're called a charter.
They're by state, they're an officer.
It makes sense.
Right.
And they have, are tasked with the public records keeping and stuff. So I would like to see our charter review committee consider that as one of our options. For the upcoming charter changes.
So to touch on that, um, one of the meetings I was at last weekend, they're trying to, they're trying to push.
Second, we got to do that pretty quick because they.
Meeting tomorrow night. Yeah.
Yeah.
They meet tomorrow night. So.
Do we want to add it? Try to add.
The backup will be provided.
Do you want me to expedite that? Yes. Do you know, as a group, want me to make sure that this is communicated to the charter review committee for their.
I think Todd is going to talk to that.
Oh, no, separate, kind of separate from that, but about the town clerk. The town clerks association is trying to get it where the clerks are exempt from public records for their home address and that sort of thing. Like, right, like, like every, have we done a resolution to support that? Do you know?
Yes, yes.
We have. Yes. Okay.
All right, I'm going to call tomorrow morning and see if they will put this on. Karen, sorry.
You, you heard it here first.
You heard it here first. You were right here when it came up.
So I, I know one of the things that's on there and most, I don't think anybody can speak about this. One, one of the things is talking about changing the four to three on the charter officers for termination. And something we got to keep in mind, so with the town manager, you probably could find a thousand attorneys as opposed to one town manager. Because there's so few town managers in, in state of Florida. Um, and when you make it easier to terminate a town manager, you're going to have less applicants because they don't have the. You know, they don't have the, the harder threshold to get rid of them.
Yeah. And this is something that you're going to have to pitch if we end up going.
No, I know, I know. But I mean, this is something that, that, that needs to be looked at, making that change. Because if you're a town manager and you're going to apply to four different places and one of these. Three people can get rid of me and the other four, it takes four people to get ready. I'm not going to apply to three. I'm not going to bother with it, right? Because I don't have the job security of that one. So it's lessening our pool of potential applicants. If it's going to change, maybe the best thing to do is remove it from the charter. That way, if a council said, hey, we'll approve this contract and in the contract, we'll say it takes four to get rid of you. And leave that open to, open to the council who's negotiating.
And the charter not specify that?
You, you could take it out of the charter completely.
The charter, but by resolution, I mean, we have to put it on the ballot.
No, no, I understand, but can, can that be removed from the charter language?
Yeah. So instead of taking it from four to three, just remove it entirely is my point.
So then it would be on a contractual.
Yeah, but if you're counting on always having a council that's going to.
But, but they're not, if they can't get a town manager, unless they give the four, well, then that's what they're going to have to do.
So then each manager candidate can negotiate.
Correct, correct. Because if it says in there three, it couldn't be negotiating their contract. It couldn't, it couldn't say four.
Correct.
So I think if you're going to change it from four to three, you'd rather just take it out.
Twist.
So you could leave it in there for, you could do it for three for the attorney because there's thousands of attorneys. We can find those all day. Sorry, Jeff.
Just got to pay the money for them. So also add to the charter thing to consider just removing the.
Yeah, instead of going.
You're removing the removal clause, basically.
Yeah. The manager's part.
Is there a way of suggesting that it can be negotiated?
No, we just. That, that would be part of.
Right. That would be part of the.
The process of.
Getting a town manager.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, I think we need, on that note, I think we need to work on coming up with some kind of set contract type of thing instead of this.
Well, I think League of Cities can provide you with templates.
And by the way, we're getting on the elevator with somebody from Westlake. They are having an open position for their town manager, 200,000 plus car allowance.
And something else, a $400,000 package.
But they're paying, aren't they paying a, a management company?
They are. There is going to be a contract, another contract, non-employee.
Just a contract.
They don't pay any benefits.
It's not a company. It's just a contract for a manager.
But their town clerk works for a company.
Everybody is by contract. They have no employees. All of their employees are by contract.
And they're pulling in a lot more money.
And they don't have a, they don't have a dependent district, seminal improvement district has their, has their own, right? But a little bit more notice.
But they don't have.
It's a hair.
They don't have any benefits paid either.
Right. It's, it's incorrect. There's no benefits.
Contract. Right. So it's, it's, there's a contract.
So it's 200,000 plus car allowance. I don't know what the car allowance was. He didn't even, he didn't even say.
Say, he said something about it being over, over a $400,000, just over a $400,000 package.
Oh, 400,000 on package. Right. So what's the car allowance?
I saw that.
Is it a Rolls Royce or what?
Saw a story on her.
Want to get that job.
Right. But keep in mind, they don't, they don't have, that seminal improvement district has their own manager.
I would be curious to wonder how, how that's assessed. Those lots are this big, right?
While, while I, we have, have us all together, there's a couple of things I wanted to. Go over if I could.
Strategically.
The first one is, I don't know if everybody's aware, but this is Florida Cities Week. Happy Christmas.
Yeehaw.
Happy. One of our goals during this week is supposed to be spread awareness.
Hold on, Jane, give us a sec.
I'm sorry. Did she have something she wanted to say? Oh, go ahead, Jane.
You said it's slightly above. Westlake is 9,299 residents.
Is it that much?
I was being sarcastic, Jane.
Oh, you were.
I was being sarcastic. That's why I looked at Tracy and I'm like slight, slight.
That's triple our size.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's what happens when you have one house per like a third of a night.
50 feet.
50 feet.
Two other things. It's like. My work relationship, I, I've been manager, uh, practice managers, et cetera. Nobody ever got paid anything unless they brought in receipts for their expenses. And I've also, and I've discussed this with Todd again, um, I had an employee who got unwrongly charged criminally. And she was put on probation, no raises, no nothing until that was cleared up. I, I don't, this is not rocket science here. I don't, I don't get it.
Well, wait a minute. She was charged, right?
No, she was not.
You just said she was charged and then she got cleared up.
Had an investigation.
There is no investigation.
The investigation's done.
There is no investigation.
I'm not even talking about, I'm just talking about like the transit. I don't think things should be so hard. Yeah. Well, let's get back to the expenses.
Prancing under investigation.
There is an investigation.
There is no investigation. There is no investigation.
From the state of.
There never was an investigation. There was a case number assigned. There was no investigation anyhow, but. I agree.
No, we, yeah, we, we concur.
I agree. That's nice that they fixed it.
But she didn't get anything until all that was rectified. That's, that's just my point in general. It's like, this is not hard. It's just. And this is, I think, part of the problem with the residents is there's not a lot of clarification. I think we have one person saying there was an investigation, another person saying there wasn't one. And it's, what are we supposed to do?
Well, I, I think it comes along the lines of, of what we were talking about when we first started out, you know? Well, there's, there's some stuff that we can clarify, some stuff we can't clarify because of ongoing. Investigations, non-investigations, whatever the case may be. You can't, you know, you got a contract pending that's coming up. You can't, you know. You can't make determinations based on, on hypotheticals. You have to have, you know, concrete evidence in front of you. Um, you make a determination on a hypothetical, you open yourself up. Like, you know, liability wise and things like that. So I think, you know, to, to. To ask, ask to clarify what's going on with this. I understand the frustration. I think we are all frustrated up here as well, trying to figure out what's going on, et cetera. Um, you know. Cause you're one thing from this person, one thing from that person. I get what you're saying, but you know, to, to, you know, just. Where was it going?
I don't know.
My, my, I went like this. I'm sorry, but you know, the, the idea is, 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 you know, I don't think it's so hard. I think, I think every, I think a lot of folks made it hard. I think a lot of folks made some assumptions of, of, of. Of the people sitting at this table, um, based on, you know, I don't know what it was based on. But because we weren't coming out and going, you know, uh, burn somebody at the stake or whatever the case may be, or, you know. Tar and feather them and send them down the road, you know, it's, it's, you know, it, and that's what happens. That's, that's, that's the world we live in today. Um, you know, things get thrown out there, uh, whether they're right, wrong and different, um, and a lot of assumptions are made. I, I think for us to sit and make assumptions and accusations out loud, um, in, in the effort of being clear. You know, I think that's not the proper thing.
If you drown, she's a witch. If she floats, she's a witch.
I had a text today that said that the town manager is being criminally charged with three or four counts today.
That was not a boom, boom, done. He met on that lawyer contract multiple times.
Like five.
Yeah. Okay.
That dead horse.
No, I mean, listen, I think we all would have liked.
Can say is just keep, keep asking questions and just talk to multiple people. I would definitely not consider just. One source for all your information, you know, just like you don't just watch Fox News, you watch a little M B C, you watch a little CNN. You kind of get all the news and then you put it all together to what you might believe, right? Or what you might think is the most factual and it's usual, some, usually some kind of meeting in the middle. So I would say just keep asking questions and don't count on one news source as your source of news, if that makes sense.
One of the loudest news sources said what we're doing here tonight is not legal, but we can't do this. We cannot, the five of us can't sit here and meet.
Yes, we can.
I know we can, you know.
But a person who is represents himself as our news source, one of the news sources in town. Said this is illegal, what we're doing.
And also said that we can't give back money on the, on the trash collection. We can't do that. That's not legal. However, the town's been doing that for years, just not to that extent, right? So you got to think about your source sometimes and you got to start questioning those sources.
And I'd like to think whoever. Yeah.
Yeah.
So this is why I voted off so I can get the clarification and I can listen to you. And then I can figure out whether I can trust it or not.
Well, and I think, I would like to think that the five of us sitting up here, that we aren't going to act on any. Well, and we can't do this every time, right? I mean, this is great. This is kind of why we wanted this, but you know.
Right. Every month.
We're going to do once.
Yeah. And I, and I think we have, and I think, you know, I think you're going to see with the five folks that are sitting up here and hopefully, you know. Maybe we're all sitting here after March. Maybe we're not. I don't know what's going to happen, but as we move along, you know.
She's not. She can be sitting over there.
Going like.
Can I just handle?
But I guess. All right. Yes.
But it, but it was good for the five of us. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm happy.
Not, no offense to you guys, but the whole reason we did this is so that we could talk. And it's no, I mean, like you guys have been great and we appreciate interacting with you, but the whole point is that we can't talk anywhere else. And many of us prior to sitting on this board together were people who talked all the time.
Yeah.
You know, about things in the town, you know, or even as, as I, when I was on council before this one got put on. He was, he's always been one of my go-to people for information. And I was like, well. Now whom am I going to go to, you know, because he's like an encyclopedia, but you know, I can't talk to him outside of here about anything. But you know, hey, how's your kid doing? How's my mom doing? Kind of stuff. Right. Like, there's a couple of like feel-good, like detailed things that I kind of wanted to take care of tonight because they're imminently coming up. So can I do those? And then if we have any moments at the end, because we said we were going to stop at eight. So first of all, happy Florida Cities Week, everybody. Just to make you guys all aware, our mission in Florida Cities Week as, as representatives. Is to spread the awareness on what local government does. So I think tonight was a huge success in doing that. So thank you for the acknowledgement of that, Jane, and, um. And maybe you guys can spread it further than here and maybe we can all spread it further than here too. On what, what the powers of local government are, what we can do and what we can't do, because I think it's really important. And I think people a lot of times expect us to do things that we absolutely can't do, you know? I mean, I have people all the time, well, you need to do this. Well, I, I can raise awareness on it. I can call, you know, and bring it to somebody's attention. But no, I can't get this taken care of for you. If you, if I told you how many of those calls I get a week, you'd be amazed. Um, but anyhow, I, I do try to refer them. I do try to follow up and make sure that they got called or, you know, spoken to or whatever, but whatever. Um, December 14th, get your calendars out, Todd. December 14th is the Wellington parade that we usually ride in. Now, the year, last year, what we did was we. We wanted to do a float on the cheap because we didn't want to cost the town any money because councils before had spent a ridiculous sum of money to be in the parade. And we didn't want to do that. So we've got the flatbed. We, we decorated it with like bales of hay, which we got donated. So, you know, anyhow, this year it's celebrating the season through the years. So I'd like to get us all up there on December 14th. Within mind that we have a flatbed, celebrating the season through the years. I don't know. I thought a couple of us could be like dressed up like kids playing ball. I don't know. I, I, whatever, anybody comes, I, 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 I'm not sure. Like you could have beards on, we could put a little white on your beard. You could be like two old men at rock and show march. Wait a minute, we'll put march in a rock. Whatever. Anyhow, start thinking about what we might do and maybe next time we'll talk about it. Because we have to start letting public works know how we want them to decorate our flatbed for us.
Yeah, because we can't even talk about this outside of here.
We can't talk.
We have a special meeting.
Might expend money on it. So that's why I wanted to get it in your mind. So put it on your calendar for December 14th.
Celebrating the season.
Celebrating the seasons through the years. I mean, last year was like rocking, so we dressed up as like rock, rock stars and put plastic guitars all around it. And it cost all of like $200 to put our float together, got the hay bales donated. So again, me being cheap, I want to do it on the cheap. I don't want to cost the town any money again. But let's try to think about some clever ideas for celebrating the seasons through the years and hopefully we can all.
Well, and, and public works seem to enjoy.
They did enjoy decorating it for us and everything, but we got to give them a clue of how we want them to decorate it. So if we can know by, when would we be doing this again?
Um, the second Tuesday of November.
I know, but what's the date? I'm trying to see how much time we'd be giving.
No, that's December 14th of the parade.
Sorry, what were you on?
Would the November meeting be?
On November meeting?
Eighteenth.
Oh, the workshop? Yeah.
So that still gives them a couple of weeks. Okay. So let's make it like hard and fast by the 18th. We need some. Oh, wait, you have an idea right now? All right.
So what if we picked, um. Like, uh, Home Alone? Like we could dress up like the. Yeah, like a Home Alone character.
Yeah, the bad guy coming down the fireplace.
Yeah, one could be a bad guy. I mean, I, I don't really know the movie that well, but we, and maybe we get some kids to, you know, come on the float with us.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think if we, I mean, what is that movie from, like 2000?
No.
Older than.
Older than that.
No way.
For real.
I mean, we could just like have a Home Alone on it, like so it identifies what we're doing, but, because that's like an age, that's like a.
Or if we just.
Lampoon's vacation, Christmas vacation. We could get an old books, uh, an old wagon and put a tree on top and somebody be Griswold.
1990.
I call Randy Quinn.
Rings does Christmas. Okay, so let's come back on the 18th with some real solid, watch the movie.
I'll watch the movie, see how realistic.
So we're going to get, so what, what was the date? You said the 18th?
Eighteenth.
Yes. Okay. So float ideas, Craig, I'll, I'll call Craig and let him know that we'll get those float ideas to him by the 19th. So we've got to like have on the 18th what we want. Look through the Oriental Trading catalog and see what kind of direct we want to order. Last year we had three turtles, little plastic turtles, which are pretty inexpensive and candy. Um, so we might do that again, just because turtles is what we are. Um, so anyhow, come with your ideas on the 19th, on the 18th, so I can have the ideas to him by the 19th. But they could pressure wash the, the thing at least and get it ready. Okay. And I'd love to get all of us out there. If we can all do it. Last year was not all of us.
Well, like we could have like a couch and a little fake.
Whatever, granny and a rocker, granny and a rocker and burglars.
I got stuck on Griswold. I was like, I want to be Randy Quinn. Hey, Bart.
What year was National Lampoon's Christmas Vacation? That had to have been from the early 80s.
You have to watch that. Okay. So we got some boogie watching to do and some ideas to generate. Okay, guys? And then the other thing is the, um, Saturday, the 8th of November. Is our Founders and Veterans Day Parade. So, um. Our parade is going to start in this medical center parking lot right here. It's going to go, it's going to be short and sweet. It's not going to be over there. It's going to start here. It's going to go down citrus and it's going to end at the park, which is where our founders day is going to be at the park down here. So it's going to be a very short and sweet. Okay? Hopefully we can get some people out on the parade route to watch us this way as opposed to wandering, manaring the roads with nobody there. Um, anybody who wants to join me in the parade, I don't know. I, I can either go in. I went in a vehicle last year and led it with a sign, but I also can ride if somebody wants to ride with me, whatever. Let me know. We'll figure out, but start thinking about that. That we need to figure out probably by, well, really soon. So, um, that I think you can talk to me about what you want to do, but that's definitely an all hands on deck thing. We tried to do the program last year. So like everybody had a part to read, everybody had something to. But that's definitely an all hands on deck thing. We tried to do the program last year. So like everybody had a part to read, everybody had something to do. Marge and I have been tasked with, um,
The list.
Taking the veterans list that was assembled last year and trying to like delete and add as needed to it, um.
Or categorize.
Or categorized by who's alive, who's dead. Maybe by service. Um, so anybody who wants to help with that.
And there must be active duty kids.
Yeah, and especially the younger generation. That's what, when Marge and I were talking preliminary last week and we were at a workshop together and we were preliminary talking about that was where we really missed. We got a lot of, we got the old and dead guys last year, but I know there has to be more like younger active duty people in town and, and we really didn't. So if anybody knows any way we can tap into that or figure that out or can tap into it and figure it out and get it to us, that would be great. But that has to happen sooner rather than later because that's rapidly approached. Okay, those were my business things that I just wanted to get covered.
Is there any way that they can put, put a notice on, um, the town website?
Sure.
To, um.
I can ask them.
Call. Call in names.
Some of our Facebook friends could do that.
Call in names? Give up? Do you mind him giving your phone number to call Marge to be added to the list?
Well.
Facebook friends out there, would you be willing to put a post up to call Marge with?
If I don't recognize the number, I don't answer. I get too much spam.
Can I just?
Can they text you? Okay, Karen, can you have it be text her so that she won't, they get spam if it's somebody? Yeah, so she knows it's real? Okay.
Thank you, Karen.
Arm twisting.
And we need a cutoff date because they want the list like yesterday.
Well, they got to contact these people, right?
Yeah, contacting, if they make something.
Say by like next Friday or something like that. They can, they can deal with that.
And next Friday is a week.
This Friday is Halloween.
Yeah, have it be the thirty-first. Karen, could you have it by the thirty-first of, of, by Halloween day? No, but to have them to text her.
Tell them to submit.
Submit their names by then so they can be included on our list and be honored on Veterans Day, something, something along those lines. Okay, I know I interrupted you, but I just wanted to get those little business things taken out. So please go right ahead.
I just have two things. One, Todd, comment. You keep saying that you're going to give people money back. I don't even know what the word you use, from whatever you were trying to do with PBSO. Would it be more beneficial and cost savings if you just did a rebate on the tax refund? Instead of now paying somebody to cut checks and everybody get a re- refund on a check, you're, you're now spending a lot more money paying someone and then you're spending that on a check.
We've already adopted the four fifty for the, for the garbage assessment. Can't change.
You can't do a rebate.
No, we're doing a rebate on that four fifty. We can't, we can't reduce that tax bill that's going down.
Yeah, we can't use the property appraiser to do that.
Well, we could have done the four fifty down to, down to fifty dollars.
Right.
But due to time constraints, that wasn't possible.
So maybe in the future.
In the future we could.
It would be cost, because what you're talking about to do.
Has to be made first. The way the decisions are made seems to be like all out of order, but it's the way that they happen. It's mandated by state law.
Because to me, now we're spending a lot more money paying someone to cut the checks, do the checks, now send them through the mail. It's just kind of crazy.
But because of time constraints and because we're, you know, going to try to get out of this contract, you're just, we already had to adopt a four fifty a month ago.
Is it even going to happen this year?
That's the hope. We only funded the account for two months.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And then my second thing, I have to say thank you. This was probably the most pleasurable meeting I've ever been to. And I think you guys have gotten more done tonight with what you've did, what you've done, hello, than any town council meeting ever. So thank you. This was, this was amazing. Well, no, you're talking about things. This is things we don't get to do in committees is have conversation. We're, we have the people over there running it and telling us what we need to do and what we need to think, and it's not conversation. This is a conversation. You guys have gotten more done by what you're conversing about than having, sitting up there trying to deal with everybody else in the room. So thank you. This was by far the most informative meeting I've ever.
Free form helps for a lot of things. I mean, yes, preformed agenda, getting business done is, is important because you have to get those things done, right? But to have, to have the free form couple hours, I think is, that's what I've been asking for.
Well, and I think people don't understand, we're the executive board of the town. Where our meetings are business meetings.
Yeah.
So this is not that format. This is us by law.
A lot of business done.
Of course.
Of course, to me, it's a lot more done than any other meeting.
Yeah, yeah. And I mean, while we still need answers from staff, you know, I, I, I think this has been long overdue and I appreciate it.
So Nita and I were at a League of Cities event the last weekend.
Two weekends. Two weekends.
Two weekends ago. And, and somehow this, you know, what we're having tonight came up. And there was a couple of the council members at other places were like, huh, look, yeah, that's, we need to do that at ours, you know? And I got a feeling one was going to call us and say, how did it go? And, you know, we're going to give them a great response. It went fantastic.
Yeah.
Because it, because it could have went south, right? We could have had somebody that comes in here and goes crazy, you know?
Right.
About some, the, the next fire for next month. And we wouldn't have gotten anywhere, right? So I'm glad.
Well, that's, that's the key. That's the key is every, everybody, you know, that's what we've been talking about for the past couple of months, you know, in the comments too, is at the end of the meeting is just if we can all be respectful and civil and get your point across, everybody's got an opinion, right?
Anita, don't leave it.
We don't always. We don't, we don't always agree. Todd, I don't agree a lot. We've had, we've had arguments in the past. Cassie and I don't agree all the time. But if we can all just, you know, put our point across and everybody has, you know, meaningful conversation about it and we can come to a mutual decision about how to move forward, I think we're going to accomplish a lot.
It allows us.
And don't know what somebody is thinking.
Oh, come on. We just, we didn't hold it.
So interesting that you say.
You like?
So I honestly just, I just got done reading a book. And it, and it, it's, it's actually called the Lucifer's Effect. And it, I, and it's about how good people behave evil, evilly. And it's fascinating. The psychology of it is just fascinating. But that is, the crux of it is that it's a situational result. Okay? And that is one of the things they point to. So the whole thing started, there's a thing called the Stanford Prison Experiment. And the whole thing started, the guy who wrote this book is the guy who did the Stanford Prison Experiment. So he was at, hmm, Stanford University, psychology professor, and he took ten kids. The same kid, basically by any other factors, right? Okay. They, and they all did like psychological studies first, you know, tests to make sure that they were all of, you know, the same type of personality and even personality. But half of them got guard uniforms. And half of them were prisoners. Okay, and were put in classrooms that were changed into cell, whatever, you know, they, they made like cell-like conditions. They had to shut it down in one week.
Well, there's a study.
In one week, they had to shut it down because of the brutality of the boys and the hierarchy. And it's, and so the whole book is this exploration. I mean, it looks at Nazi Germany. It's, again, it's very fascinating. It looks at, yes, the Nazis, the, the, the Jews themselves who killed other Jews, because I mean, it's fascinating, but it's all situational. I mean, it's, it's really a little scary, but see, when you talk about that situation compared to this situation, it's situational. So let's all think about that as we move forward, right? That we're still the same people. And read the book because it's fascinating. I'm sorry.
Clarifying for these folks that came to me, we're not going to do the workshop before the next council meeting, right?
No, this is the opportunity.
This is going to be the workshop, community workshop as well.
This is the community concerns session.
Our meetings will start at six. There'll be the comments on non-agenda items, right? But we are not going to do that thirty-minute.
No, we're not going to do the comments on non-agenda items. We said we were going to do away with that too. We're going to go straight to business.
Understand that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what.
We're going to go straight to business on council meeting nights. You'll still be able to comment on agenda items, but all of your non-agenda comments, because we want to give we want, I mean, I think our philosophy is that we want to give, we want to give it its own time, like in its own consideration. And this is really the best format to do that, you know? I mean, instead of it just being twenty people stand up in front of us and complain about this, that or the other, and we really can't say anything about it. And we just got to, got to sit there and look at you this way. This is perfect because it's interactive and we can actually like talk about it and plan what we might do about it in the future. I mean, I think this is beautiful. I think it's a beautiful thing, so.
Last conversation.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we have so many questions being over here and we don't ever really get to have that conversing thing with you guys. So.
Well, and we, we did a study, um, or the clerk did a study of other towns around us and how they conducted, you know, their concerns. And, uh, it's surprising that, uh, we were doing more to try to deal with the residents. But.
They were feeling like they were giving, yeah.
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 Same, same.
Some, some, some people we have to deal with. And then there's, and then there's you all, right? But it's, I mean, yes.
I didn't mean that negatively at all. I mean, it's, I didn't mean that negatively.
It's all about being constructive, right? It's what it's about.
Said that we wanted was to be down here and be a, a circle. Uh, and I, I thought we were going to have the, the residents, um, be part of this.
Well, we, we tried, but we, what, actually, when Annie and I were setting it up, we were like, that's really only two seats. So what do we do? First two people? I would just have everybody sit where they want to sit and do whatever. Yeah.
Yeah.
Eight oh one.
Eight oh one. Motion to dismiss.
Motion.
Call in favor.
Thanks, ladies.
Oh, wait, grab that microphone, Todd. Oh, there it goes. Thank you, Tracy. All right, yeah, thank you.
All right, so, um, do we want to get together?
Jeez, it's Marge, my schedule looks quite awesome.